Welcome. Regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting, 6:00 PM, Wednesday, May 1st, 2024, City Hall Complex, Chamber, Council Chambers. Would you please, I call this minute to order, would you please rise for the pleasure of allegiance? Thank you. We have plenty of call to the public. Excuse me. Okay, we're gonna... You got seven on one item, two on another item, two on another item, and then one on another item. So, you know, I'm gonna give everybody an opportunity to talk, but please keep it, you know, three, four minutes, please. And remember, it's a presentation, council cannot engage in any, in any comments or, or conversation. First of all, I called Dr. Reverend David M. Carney. Would you please rise, state your address and name, please?
Well, thank you for this opportunity, and thank you for your ongoing service to this community. And Mr. Mayor, City Councilmen and Women, it's an important time in our culture and in our city's ongoing challenges. And I wanted to address the sidewalk issue without going into a lot of details. I handed, at least for the public that's here, a copy of Dignitas Infinita, a summary of it, on April 8th of this year, the Salamity of the Enunciation, the Dichasteri for the Doctrine of the Faith, published, and that's the Roman Catholic Diocese, published the Declaration of Human Dignity, known as Dignitas Infinita. And this, as a Protestant, is probably striking, I hope, that I applaud this five-year study and its call to the faithful of the Roman Catholic Church, which I don't know what the percentage is here, but I would guess there's a huge percentage, not only in our community, but represented on this council. In a day and age when faith is diminished and attacked and minimized, I would ask that, especially in these turbulent times, politically, culturally, that you would deeply consider, be you Roman Catholic, Protestant, none of the above, the importance of this summary as you look at it, which I think all of you, at least on the council, are privy to now that I handed it out. I'll just read a few excerpts from it. The presentation of this five-year study tracks the development of this document starting in 2019, highlighting the request of the Holy Father to give more attention to, and I quote, "grave violations of human dignity in our time." It announces that the first three sections discuss principles and theory, all related to dignity. I'll jump into gender ideology now. And I quote from the summary, "Gender ideology is denounced as a concept, as a theory. The document upholds the dignity of the person and their right to protection regardless of sexual orientation." So this is not a call to change laws, or put down anyone, or prejudge anyone for me or this committee. But it does reject, excuse me, however, the church warns against the gender ideology which pushes for nonexistent rights and falsely, and I quote, "cancels differences." Such ideologies also promote an attitude of the self-determination in such a way that it puts the person in the place of God and therefore offends Him and His gift, that is life and creation. My concern, as the church seeks to warn, that anything that promotes... Is my time up?
Almost.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir.
Oh, my goodness. I had my... Is it really almost up? Anything that promotes that which has hidden agendas, and I'm not talking about all in the LGBTQ community, I'm talking about those who would be the promoters of a radical ideology that has taken an incredible biblical symbol, that I know Fred's going to address later, and used it to diminish the seriousness. And I'll just give you one example. Pedophilia is one of the most hidden agendas of the LGBTQ radical agenda. If you don't believe me, you can search the websites and go into it. And so my concern is taking what may have been legitimate concerns by a sector of our society and using it in such a manner that would diminish the concerns of parents, clergy, Protestants, Roman Catholics, Muslims, that would not identify with the ideology that promotes the most radical agendas regarding transgender and pedophilia and beyond. So it sounds subtle, and as a person who represents, at least at one time on staff, the biblical truths of the Christian faith, it is not unmerciful or ungracious to say no to that which would confuse down the line our community when it comes to, is the council and the community putting a stamp of approval on the LGBTQ community in all of its agendas and expressions? Why haven't we put sidewalks out to honor our vets? I mean, not sidewalks, Native Americans. I could go on with lists of far more abused aspects of our society. And so I would caution you to have the public square remain neutral. It's not a statement against LGBTQ at all, but it is a statement in fairness to keep our community neutral when it comes to matters such as this. Thank you for the time.
Next, we have Mr. Fred Millner.
Greetings, esteemed Mayor Madonado, and council members, fellow citizens. My name is Fred Millner, and it's a real pleasure to be standing before you today. Just Monday, I stood right out there with a choir of amazing kids to come and say thank you in song for your service and for all that you do for us. So I hope you enjoyed it, those of you that were there. It is the children that I have in mind as I stand before you. The Constitution states that government is established to promote the general welfare and to secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. That's the kids. You might be amazed to know that I think this rainbow represents the perfect opportunity to remind children, and all of us, of something we should never forget, and that's the flood of Noah's time mentioned in the Bible. Why am I mentioning the flood? Because in Genesis, God says, "I have set my rainbow in the clouds, and it will be a sign of the covenant between me and the earth. Whenever I bring clouds over the earth and the rainbow appears in the clouds, I will remember my covenant between me and you and all living creatures of every kind. Never again will the waters become a flood to destroy all life." The rainbow is a meaningful symbol to Christians everywhere. It tells that there is a holy God who created everything for His glory and purpose. He is a God of love, but also a God of justice. And it tells us that His desire is for us to follow His good path. So here's my point. Given the large Catholic and Christian population of the city of Nogales, I would like to request that if the council decides to allow this rainbow crosswalk to be painted, and in the spirit of inclusiveness, that we put a cloud or a line reading, "Remembering God's Promise", to be included. Or if there's a compliance issue with ADOT, we could put a sign on either side of the sidewalk saying the same thing, "Remembering God's Promise," above this rainbow crosswalk. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Next, we have Alejandro Ronquillo Jr.
Hello, my name is Alejandro Ronquillo Jr. It is an honor to be here before you guys, and I just want to say good evening, Honorable Mayor Madonado and City Council. I'm speaking in behalf of the concerned citizens about this council accepting the proposal from the Santa Cruz County Democratic Party for a rainbow crosswalk in the city of Nogales. The main problem is that this will cause a division within the community, as well as an uprising of both groups against each other, due to the symbol and the meaning of this crosswalk being completely in contradiction and against the moral traditions, the moral ethics and beliefs, nonreligious and religious, of most citizens of Nogales, Arizona. Another problem is that once you allow one group to come in and paint whatever they walk in any city crosswalk, you will not be able to stop any other group from painting whatever they want on any crosswalk in the, in the city of Nogales. Before you know it, you will have all kinds of distractions and paint it all over the crosswalks. This will become a dangerous environment for pedestrians and vehicle traffic as well. Let's not be short-sighted. Let's, all that money that can be saved from lawsuits that can come out of this, it could be all invested in furthering the city of Nogales for the future of our children, for the future of the children after our children, you know, after we are long gone. And I just want to thank you all for the cordial attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Mr. Stephen McQueen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. My name is Steve McEwen. I'm a resident of Rio Rico. I'm a recipient of a bachelor's degree in sociology with emphasis on behavioral studies. I've also had several semester graduate studies in psychology. My professional life is with the State Juvenile Parole Officer for the Department of Family Services and Department of Corrections. I bring my education, my professional experience to your attention to give credibility to my observation of this very fine community. The diversity of this community is remarkable. We have Hispanics, Germans, Italians, Spanish, indigenous, and many other European ethnic groups coexisting in this city and county. The most remarkable trait I have consistently found is the natural willingness of most citizens to help one another. It seems to be second nature to many of those I have met. I believe the character of the people of this community is the beacon of hope that best represents the message of love and equality in this community. I also feel that singling out a single minority of people in this community may still instill separation, and ultimately feelings of rejection of other ethnic groups or religious beliefs that are not symbolized on the streets. I called a couple of my gay friends for their opinions concerning the goals of love and equality represented by the rainbow crosswalk. I received comments like, "My sexual preference is not a subject of discussion by the general public," and feel it inappropriate to do so. And if I painted your national flag on the street, how would you feel if people drove, drove over it? And I think the money could be better spent for their cause. Where do we end this type of representation in our city by painting our streets and sidewalks? Perhaps as a minority in this community, I could ask for a symbol of white Anglo-Saxon representation to unify the community and show a beacon of love and equality. I also feel the placement in front of our old courthouse, now our school administration building, may give out mixed messages to its clientele. Instead, I think the community would be better served by making the month of June Emancipation Month, to better celebrate June 19th, to celebrate the abolition of slavery of all kinds in this United States, and celebrate the equality of all men and women with educational programs and social media. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Now we have Ms. Deborah McEwen.
Chairman and council members, thank you for allowing this public comment time. My name is Deborah McEwen. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz County, and I rise today to comment on the rainbow painted sidewalk, crosswalk proposal. The speaker at a previous meeting had indicated that someone had entered her office because they saw a rainbow flag posted in her window, and it made her feel welcomed. I would hope that each and every window in Nogales streets makes more than just one person feel welcome. When I came to this town many years ago, I was a minority stepping into a rich historical culture full of diverse people, in various languages, expansive economic strata, and vibrant religious spirits. I didn't seek out a place to feel welcome. Instead, I found a community where I could take my place among citizens and embrace its diverse opportunities, fostering my own sense of belonging and unity. One of the most significant aspects of our community is its rich historical background, a source of immense pride for its citizens. It was disheartening to learn that a rainbow painted crosswalk proposal was intended to cut through and sit in front of our historic courthouse, potentially undermining its critical heritage. My comments to this council today concern protecting and maintaining the historical presence of our buildings, streets, and neighborhoods. I ask that rules and regulations be researched and complied with to preserve their already encroached upon appearance, maintenance, and uses. Arizona revised statutes and DOT rules regulate improvements on heritage and historical areas to prevent offensive and detracting alterations to these respected sites. I hope that the council considers the already welcoming and pride-filled atmosphere that Nogales and the courthouse historic area exude, and does not blemish it with an out-of-place clashing pulp culture motif such as a rainbow painted crosswalk. If the proposal aims to welcome and include people to this eclectic area of Nogales, Arizona, and in fact, America itself, I recommend expanding June 19th, otherwise known as Juneteenth, to the entire month of June as Emancipation Month. Nogales can celebrate the abolition of slavery and emancipation, not only for blacks, but also for enslaved indigenous persons, Irish, Scots, Orientals, and other indentured and enslaved people. It will be a prideful way to recognize the significant contributions of all those who fought for their freedom and abolition of slavery. We can take any questions you may have, and thank you for this time.
Thank you. Next, we have Jesus B. Hades.
Hades. My name is Jesus Hades. I've been a resident of Santa Cruz County from 1976 to the present. I like it here, and I decided to stay here. I came to Nogales in 1976 to work on the port, at the port, as an immigration inspector. I also found other ways of serving my community, because that was what I was taught by my mentors. Whatever efforts I make at the port, every effort must be directed towards serving the community, something that I still live to. I have been and will continue to serve the community today and tomorrow. One of the things that I have to say is that I'm a constitutionalist, and somewhere in that massive paperwork that our founding fathers gave us, there's a part that says that we are free to find the pursuit of our happiness. And if the LGBTQ community wants to pursue their happiness, I'm fine with it. It's not going to be imposed upon me, but as long as they don't hurt kids and don't get violent, it's their right. I agree. But to put that flag on a sidewalk in Nogales sort of brands us. I am not pleased to see it something like that. If, if it were, like one of the speakers mentioned, we should have respected other groups, veterans especially. I am a combat Vietnam vet, and there's a lot of things we weren't given. Respect was one of them when we came back home. At any rate, I see that flag on a sidewalk, and it's a brand, and I don't want to be branded by that. I don't think the rest of Nogales wants to be branded by that flag. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Maran Yamamoto.
Oh, thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to speak about the, what do you call, rainbow-covered crosswalk. And it's obviously, it's been promoted by the Democratic Party, and I don't think a city should promote democratic or political signs on the street. It's, well, like they said before, catching. Why not put a MAGA sign on a crosswalk right next to it? You know, for the same reasons. So the city shouldn't put money out to paint this side, crosswalk. All the Democratic Party says they're gonna fund it, but we'll see. What are they gonna do to maintain it five years from now, 10 years from now? I doubt if it'll be around that long, but it's still gotta be maintained, so no, the city shouldn't follow that. They should be neutral and keep the sidewalk, crosswalks with white mines on them, so people recognize them. The colored rainbow crosswalks would probably be a distraction to the drivers, and they may not see everybody in the crosswalk, so it's not a good idea. I recommend that the council blocks that and doesn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Ms. Roxana Lopez.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council, and everybody that's here from the community. I'm here because I am part of the Democratic Party. We felt that the rainbow, besides being now the LGBT icon, I can remember when I was a little girl, my favorite things were rainbows. And just because somebody has taken that icon away doesn't mean that I have to put away my beautiful ideas of rainbows, maybe including a cloud, as this gentleman stated earlier. I don't think that we're stamping it with a democratic stamp on the side. We, we're doing it to make people feel welcomed all around. Lo Consulado has a flag. There are a lot of businesses around that have flags. You may have friends, family, and know people that are part of the group, and that's okay. All we're trying to say is, let's include everyone. If, and I don't agree with, if we allow one person to do it, everyone's gonna want to put up... No, not really, because they're gonna have to go through a little bit of grilling to put up anything and change anything in the city, which I understand. I understand it, but times have changed. Things have changed. Life is changing. Laws have changed. And to include more of our community may help alleviate some of the trauma and things that are happening socially to us here. So I would vote to put up the, put up the rainbow flag as including everyone, not disrespecting anyone, and not everyone thinks that it's a bad thing. So I thank you for your time, and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we go to other subject, Carolyn Schaefer.
Greetings, council members, the city staff, and also members of the public. I am Carolyn Schaefer, a 27-year resident of Santa Cruz County, living in Patagonia. I am here to ask for two future agenda items. I am a member of the Town of Patagonia Flood and Flow Committee. Another member of that committee is Chris Gardner, a hydrogeologist who has practiced hydrogeology as a consultant for environmental engineering firms in Arizona since 1998, and he specialized in high-capacity water supply and recharge wells. Chris has created a presentation on the county's surface waters and groundwater basins that I ask be an agenda item for this council's June 5th meeting. I am also the mission coordinator for Patagonia Area Resource Alliance, working to hold federal and state agencies to regulations governing water usage by mining companies. I ask that a presentation on the current actions by our organization with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and the Federal Environmental Protection Act, NEPA process, be an agenda item for this council's July 3rd meeting. It is important to hear all aspects of any issue. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we go with Mr. Robert Gilman. Yes, sir. Gilligan, Gilligan Land.
In case there was another one. Good evening, Mayor and council, public. I feel like I should be talking about a rainbow side, a crosswalk, but it's not what I'm here about today. I want to start by saying thank you from, from the municipal court. I'm, I'm the municipal court judge here. And at this last budget cycle, the council approved for some upgrades to, that were sorely needed in our facility, and we were able to upgrade our flooring and resolve some potential liability for, for the public that was coming in, as well as for our employees. And so we've got new flooring. We were holding off to see whether we were going to be moved to another place, and that hasn't happened, and we're not grudging that. In fact, we feel that our courthouse is, is situated in one of the most beautiful places in the state. There are other people that have come and have admired the fact that when I'm on the bench, there's a beautiful park right outside. And so we love where we are, and we're not, we're not asking anything else, but thank you for helping us get it into, to shape. Also, this last year, we updated our recording equipment, and the council approved for us to use some of our JSEF funds to, to do that, and so thank you for that. We're looking to upgrade some additional equipment for having remote hearings. Arizona Supreme Court has, has put out a mandate. They, they want to have remote hearings for the vast majority of the kinds of cases that we have, and we're working with our representatives from the Arizona Office, excuse me, the Administrative Office of Courts. They're in the middle of a jury trial up on the Hill, and so they haven't been very responsive recently, but, but that's gonna close up, and we'll be able to do that soon. The two issues that I want to talk about tonight have to do with this coming up budget year, budget cycle, in the area of employee compensation. One, the first one is going to be an impact that the whole city has already felt, and that the city's employees are feeling. And then the second one has a, specifically to do with the classification of court employees. First, I want to talk about the inflation. We've had historical high inflation rates in these past few years. The city did a compensation study to try to get Nogales up to, up to snuff with the other counties and cities that have employees, and making sure that we're paying what they're worth, to allow for us to have lower turnover, to make sure that we're retaining our talent. That city was done in 2019 and hasn't been updated since. There has, as I said, been inflation in the past few years, in 2020, and this is a There has, as I said, been inflation in the past few years, in 2020, and this is according to the Consumer Price Index. The yearly inflation rate was 1.2% in 2021, 4.7%. 2022 was a whiz-banger of, of a year with 8% inflation. 2023, 4.1%. If you add all of that up, we're talking about 18% over the years that have happened since the study that, that this council approved to try to get our, our people justly compensated. Last year, this council approved a 1.5% cost of living adjustment. I realize that in addition to that, this council also was working on its, on its plan. It went through the step of its plan to, to get people into the midpoint of the range of salaries that we were talking about. But the plan in itself is still outdated and hasn't been updated for inflation. If we were to illustrate, a simple illustration, an employee in 2019, if their take-home pay was $2,000, in 2019, they could purchase $2,000 worth of supplies, goods, services, housing, all of those things. In 2024, with an inflation rate of 18%, since then, that $2,000 worth of goods and services in 2019 now costs $2,478, leaving that employee, the example employee, short $478 each month of what they used to be able to afford, and that they can't do anymore. If the employer doesn't increase its pay in conjunction with the rate of inflation, it's in effect cutting the real salary of, of the employees, and that's not fair for, for our employees. I realize that you have a tough job. That's, that's a huge number to be dealing with, to say, oh, 18% and we've done 1.5. Any increases, you should be looking at 15% and wow, I don't, I don't think that that's something that, that a body can do. If you can, it's gonna take sacrifice, and my hat's gonna be off to you, right? But 15% is, is really where we should be at this time. And it wouldn't have been so difficult, over the years, that those increases had been in line with what inflation was each of the years. I mean, 2022, right, was an outlier. 8% is not something that we see. It is probably a result of all of the national injection of, of funds post-COVID to try to get people up, up to snuff. But we're now feeling the consequences of that with the, the rate of inflation that we've experienced. I, I know that employees are a responsibility and a priority for the city. Most of what I'm here to talk about tonight is just to, to put the bug in your ear. I know that over the next couple of weeks and, and months, we will be hammering some of this out in our budget meetings. In the past, I felt that that's what we were doing, and I didn't feel like maybe some of these arguments that I was making getting through. And so that's what I want to say about number one. Number two is that, about the compensation for our court staff. Our court clerks are currently in the, in range 43. They're the lowest-paid employees in the city. And there are city clerks. I'm gonna tell you about them as briefly as possible. Gabby Eravia, 16 years of experience working customer service in government, and she's in the lowest range. Manuel Rosas is an attorney in Mexico. He doesn't have a license to practice law here, but he's working for us in the city courts and has years of experience working in the law. Aileen Velazquez is our newest court clerk, has a bachelor's degree, one minute, bachelor's degree in criminal justice. My other staff is capable, hardworking, irreplaceable. And yet, with the salaries that we have, we've already lost my court manager, right, and we've hired a new one. She has a master's degree in public administration. We're extremely blessed with the talent we have, and I don't want to lose it. We're doing with what we have. I haven't asked for, for new positions, though I think that our workload would justify it. We're just simply asking for a relook at, at getting our staff out of the entry-level position that the city currently has it at, in range 43, and for our court clerks from 43 to be moved to range 47. Our senior clerks are currently in 47. Can't leave them where they are, and they ought to be moved up to range 53. And our court administrator, who's currently at 54, to be ranged 58. I know that you can't say anything. I'm, I'm planning to get on the next, on the next meeting agenda, if it's necessary. Again, we'll be in, in discussions about it. But these are things that I've had for the last two years that I thought, I think this is getting through. I think this is getting through, but I don't know it, so I'm making that clear today. I appreciate all of your time today, and thank you for your excellent and hard work.
Thank you. Next, we have Ana Parada.
My name is Ana Parada, and I'm here tonight in support of the Nogales firefighters. And to send a message that everyone here tonight, as well as the community, are behind them 100%. The firefighters deserve to work in a positive, constructive work environment where they can express their opinions and ideas with being open and accountable. The bottom line is this: support the firefighters and what's in the best interest of our city. Please do right by them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cesar Parada.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmen, and, and staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cesar Parada, and I wanna give you a little bit of my background. I've been a volunteer fireman for over 30 years. And I know every fire department in both sides of the border, on the state of Arizona, all the way up to, to San Salvador. So, you know, I go visit every fire station that I can. And this town is too small, and we know all the firefighters here. I know most of them here. And I'm here to support them for their dignity and honor as the firefighters. That's what they need. They need the full support, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parada. Next, we have Jessica Mendez.
Blessed evening, Mayor and Councilwomen, and Councilmen. So my name is Jessica Mendez. I'm a Santa Cruz County resident, Nogales resident. I am also a concerned citizen in regards to the Nogales Fire Department. I come from a family background of firefighters, starting with my grandfather, Robert G. Mendez, my dad, who was also Robert J. Mendez, and my brother was also a firefighter. Therefore, I do have the utmost respect to those who are in line of this work, because it takes courage, it takes strength, boldness, and empathy. They do face everyday emergency situations. It is my understanding that many firefighters are leaving due to the pain, due to hostile environment, which nobody in any position should be going through that. And so it is unfortunate that, to know that the Nogales Fire Department are undervalued and unappreciated. Therefore, it is imperative, very imperative, that the Nogales Fire Department be priority in all essence from a positive environment within the department, their needs as firefighters, and for their pay to be increased as they do put their own lives on the line for us. And I want to say God bless to the Nogales firefighters and any firefighter.
Thank you. Now we go to Mr. Jaime Chamberlain.
Good evening, Mayor Manzano, and members of the council. It's good to see you guys all again. For the record, my name is Jaime Chamberlain. I live at 1670 North Iron Gates Drive in Nogales, Arizona. And I'm here on behalf of the Greater Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority. And I am a, as where I am a board member of representing the Nogales Economic Development Foundation. As you guys are all about to enter the 2024-2025 budgeting process, I want to ask that you consider committing the necessary funding to update the design study for the four bridges within the city limits which run over the railroad and Wash. These bridges are essential for the east-west connectivity of Nogales and our, for our community. The Nogales Santa Cruz County Port Authority has included these bridges studies and this bridge project on our list of priorities as it's one of many projects that we have listed on our website. In 2025, 2020, 2015, the city contracted with Kimley Horn to conduct a constraints analysis, which included the conceptual designs and the cost estimates for three bridges: Gold Hill Road, Produce Row, and Calle Sonora. The study was paid for by the overweight fees that are contributed by the overweight trucks that cross our border every year. And they're collected by the state and distributed to the city and the county. The original study estimated that the cost of the widening of those bridges would be roughly $11.2 million for the three bridges on Calle Sonora, Produce Row, and Gold Hill. Based on ADOT's cost adjustment factors for 2024, these improvements for this year are probably closer to $26 million. But the only way to know for sure is if we have an updated study and have that done as soon as possible. Additionally, we would ask that we include a fourth bridge, the one located at Baffert Drive, so that that we can plan appropriately for the complete overhaul of our principal east-west connectors for our city. I think that you all agree that the crossings represent major construct, congestion and safety issues today. And these bridges were built decades ago, and we need to modernize and expand the infrastructure. They are impacted not only by their age, but they are, but they're limited width. And obviously, by the heavy flow of commercial and residential traffic that merge onto all four of these bridges, both of which these commercial traffics and residential traffics are poised to increase in the near future. To say the least, we are facing the realities of unprecedented growth in traffic for some of the fastest-growing population centers of city center, of the Nogales city center. I don't bring up this subject as a complaint, but more as an opportunity for you, the council, to make a substantial impact on the lives of your constituents while enhancing the value of our business sector. The Port Authority remains committed to working with all of you and the city administration to push for the funding of these projects, as we have for many of the important infrastructure improvements that you've seen in the community for the last 20 years. Your investment in the updated study will identify how much money we will need to lobby for our state and federal delegations for the execution and the completion of this project. We would request that the city reach out to Kimley Horn and ask if they would consider preparing an updated study on the four bridges. Once we've updated this study, we will join you all in the process to secure the necessary funding to build them and for the future growth in mind. Thank you for your consideration of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Thank you. And that's the end of the call to public. We move to presentation number one, Proclamation Mental Health Month. Mr. Bonilla.
Mayor, if I may, before I read the proclamation, I'd like to thank Castle and David, Behavioral Health Program Director, Dr. Frank Bejarano, Clinical Director of Behavioral Health, and Michelle Ramirez. They are at the forefront with all the issues with mental health. They, they've, I've learned a lot from them lately, and as, as a council member, I believe that we should be, put it, put this to the forefront because there's a great need with this community. So, Castle, would you like to come up and read the proclamation, please? I don't know if anyone else from your staff is here tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Whereas there is a proven connection between good mental health and overall personal health, and whereas mental illness affects almost every family in America, and whereas people with mental illness, if given necessary services and supports, people with mental illness recover if given necessary services and supports in their communities, and whereas people with mental illness make important contributions to our families and our communities, and whereas millions of adults and children are disabled by mental illness every year, and whereas only one out of two people with a mental health illness seeks treatment for their mental illness, and whereas stigma and fear of discrimination keep many from, who would benefit from mental health services, from seeking help, and whereas research shows that the most effective way to reduce stigma is through personal contact with someone with a mental illness, and whereas good mental health is critical to the well-being of our families, communities, schools, and businesses, and whereas greater public awareness about mental illness can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards people with mental illness. Therefore, the city has provided this proclamation. We thank you all very much.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Second presentation will be tabled. Apparently, Ms. Ayesha was, was not feeling good, so we will table the second presentation. We move on to Presentation Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan by Courtney Bear, MSTCPM, and MEP. Go ahead. Toby, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody, mayor, city council members, the public. My name is Oira Castro. I am the Director of Emergency Management with Santa Cruz County. We are here to ask the county to sign the updated multi-jurisdictional hazards mitigation plan. I have Courtney Bear here with me. She's going to give a brief presentation of why this plan is important. And then at the end, I'm gonna be closing with a small briefing.
Thank you, and welcome, Courtney.
Hi, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me. As Sobira mentioned, I am the consultant that was hired. We started about 14, 15 months ago, working on this. And I just want to give you a brief overview of what the plan is and what we're asking for as far as adoption. Mitigation is a little different than what everybody's used to hearing about. There's five stages of emergency management, and the one that we're all familiar with mostly is response. But mitigation encompasses before the incident, during the incident, and after the incident, with the main goal being sustained actions to take in to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to the people and property from hazards and their effects. So FEMA in 2000 created the Disaster Mitigation Act through Congress, and that requires that jurisdictions have, local jurisdictions, state, and even federal, have mitigation plans for their communities. And these are required to be updated every five years. I have the regulations there. But basically, we follow the FEMA's planning guide, and I'm proud to say Santa Cruz County's plan just got approved by FEMA, and it's one of the first ones for the new, the new requirements that were a lot more stringent. Every time they come out, every three or four years, they're more stringent. So we're really proud that we passed on that. So the goals are, we're focusing on natural hazards, so not a response plan, but we're looking at natural hazards. And part of what we're doing is working multi-jurisdictionally. So start with the county, and then also with the city in Nogales and town in Patagonia. We revised this plan over the last few, few months, and I wanted to kind of give you an overview for it. Like I said, it's focused on natural hazards, and it's a big-time opportunity for multi-jurisdictional coordination and cooperation, especially with, like, county departments that are shared by shared services, like flood control and things like that. So it's also an opportunity for grant funding. So one of the main reasons we do these plans is it makes you eligible for FEMA grants, and I'll show you some of those at the end. What it isn't, it's not a response plan. It doesn't tell you how to respond to an emergency. And it's not also, there's money inside the plan where it says, hey, we think this might cost this much to add this drainage to this bridge project, or whatever, and you're going to FEMA and asking for that money. It doesn't commit you to having, to have that money. It's saying, we think this is what this has cost. So it doesn't, there's nothing in this plan that holds you to spending any money. I always like to clarify that, because that's one of the things that comes out. We have five stages of plan development, and I'm not gonna go through all of them. I'm gonna hit the important part of it. Just know that there's a process that we go through with developing a planning team, looking at the hazards again in a fresh, new light, over what disasters and emergencies have happened in the county. have happened in the county and the region and the state over the last five years. We look and develop a mitigation strategy, and then we're doing what we're doing now, going around and getting plan adoption, and then implementing the plan and looking at it annually and working that way. So part of the, part of the process was we had to involve community stakeholders, the primary signatories, which I already mentioned, but we also work with a lot of federal partners, FEMA, National Weather Service, the forestry and ag. They give us a lot of data and things that we need to help describe our hazards. We have our state partners, Department of Water Resources, state climatologists, state geological survey, Department of Environmental Quality, and also the Department of Emergency Management, or Division of Emergency Management, EDMA. So we also use a lot of local jurisdictions. So here in Nogales, Juan Guerrero and Chief Urias were our main team contacts for that. They were our main team members on that, so they're also here to support us tonight. We went through and looked at all of the different hazards that can affect this area, specifically Andrew County. We, we looked at the 2018 plan. We go through, we kind of update the history, we update the description, what the impact was. They, they've added some things to that now. We have to describe the vulnerability in a greater extent. So those 2003 FEMA impacts to this plan, they added a bunch of things that we needed to really describe exactly where the hazards are. Like, we had a short paragraph on the Nogales Interceptor, but we expanded that to like two pages in here. So we're, we're trying to describe more of the things, so not only for getting mitigation grants, but maybe this kind of document can help you guys with other things as well. So our chosen plan hazards were dam failure, drought, extreme heat, flash flood and flooding. We have a lot of those, strong wind and wildfire, and we base that on historical, but we're also looking at FEMA has some tools out there where we go, hey, where were the most costly events inside Santa Cruz County, inside Nogales? Where are we spending? And then using the fire department, the police department, and the local response, like Red Cross and things like that. Hey, what are you guys getting? What information do you have? So these are the hazards that we chose for this plan. So this, then we come up with a mitigation strategy. We look at all of our capabilities. We went through the town of, or city of Nogales and got together, hey, what are, what are our codes? What are regulations? What financial resources do we have? Any administrative and technical, like how many engineers do we have? And who do we, do we have our NFIP flood insurance? Do we have vulnerable, vulnerable areas, things like that? We really assess the capabilities and everything that they can bring to the table, and then we make an overall mitigation goal, and then we identify each actions. So I believe we ended up with 14 different mitigation actions for Nogales, specifically Santa Cruz has theirs for the unincorporated area, and town of Patagonia obviously has theirs as well. There's one for, at a minimum, they have to have at least one action for each of those hazards. And then we look at that and we put it into an action plan, and those actions can be one of four things, updating local plans and regulations, city codes, building codes, things like that, implementing new policies or procedures. We can look at structure and infrastructure projects, so, and then natural systems protection, so having wetlands that are historically there to protect, prevent from flooding. You can do some work around those, but then we also have education and awareness. So one of the things I think Nogales chose for heat emergencies or extreme heat was a better education and awareness project to, to the community on what's available to them when there are temperature extremes. So those are just some examples of mitigation strategies. They're not all big, high-dollar things. A lot of, a lot of time is just, hey, let's, let's get the information out there. Let's help the citizens understand. So what we're at now, we just, I don't have the letter from FEMA, but we do have our FEMA plan approval, so we're going around and getting adoption from the three jurisdictions affected, and once you guys have that and adopted, and all three are adopted, we officially will post the plan with all the adoptions and everything over on the Santa Cruz County website. Nogales links back to it, so that's always going to be there, and then that plan is available to use for grants. That's what everybody wants to know. What, what can we, where can we find money? So there's four different grant programs, and I'm not an expert on all of them, but hazard mitigation grant is available post-disasters for all hazards, rebuilding and to prevent future losses. There's flood mitigation assistance that's available annually for NFIP, National Flood Insurance, Plan Protection Insured Buildings. Post-fire assistance is all available under that first grant. So I put that one in there because that's one I'm not a lot of people know about, but if you do have wildfire disasters, there are some grants available there post-fire, and that's all relatively new. And then building resilient infrastructure in communities replaces the old pre-disaster mitigation grants, and those are available annually. So the grant cycle, you guys are going to, if, once this gets all signed in, the next grant cycle will start, and those, the state comes out and will come out and talk to whoever they'll go through Sylvia, or they can go through you guys, you can always get with them, and hey, what grants are available and how do, how do we get involved? So that's that, and she's going to give you some specific examples. I'm from Vail, Arizona, and I know enough of the dangers about the specifics down here, and I've learned a lot, but she can tell you exactly where some of those.
So some of the examples of the projects that have been funded is Efron Canyon, the International Outfall Interceptor, the IOI, the Sonoyta Creek, the Bridges in Palo Parado and Chula Vista. We also, we need this plan as well. I would like to give an example. In front of the rec center on the Nogales Wash in front of Hojocum, there's an area where it's, where it's cutting through the street. We've been doing as well, I know the city of Nogales and the county Public Works Department has been doing a lot of mitigation to fix that area, but I want to advise you guys that this is another mitigation project that can be submitted and, and may qualify for the grant. Instead of the county and our city, using the complete resources, we can use these grants to help us mitigate that. The recent declared emergencies that we have had with, with this plan has been the flooding on Western Avenue. We have declared there as well, the Nogales Wash, the IOI. We could also use, we could have also used it for the Meadow Hill Fire. And then here, since locally, we have a lot of hazmat emergencies, it's not for, entailed exactly for hazmat, for, for other mitigations that can result after a hazmat incident, we could also be implemented here, and then we have to remember that we have the railroad, we have now the mining, and we're having other vendors as, for example, the Nogales Fire Chief and as well as the Rio Rico Fire Chief. We have come to different encounters of vendors, basically transferring fuel from one tanker to another. So that's another hazmat incident that can be also, that may also qualify for this type of grant. Other potential emergencies are future flooding events, any wild, large wildfire threats, and industrial accidents. By adopting and implementing the, this plan, we can effectively address these changes, reduce vulnerabilities, and build a safer, more resilient community for all of our residents. Thank you very much for your time and attention. We're here for any questions.
Does anybody have, go ahead, Johnson, my door?
Yes, you left me wondering.
Your mic, please.
Here we go. Can you hear me now? Okay. Do you have programs that kind of foresee certain problems, like when we have real heavy rainfalls where you can see all the gullies, all the canyons from here to Sonoyta and, and, you know, Toubac, and also into Mexico where flooding would be a problem? The same thing with fires and taking into consideration a possible earthquake if that, God forbid, but, but do you guys have those models that, that you can actually play to see if those situations existed and give you an opportunity to prepare for those future needs? The other thing I, the second part of my question would be, how well are we working with our neighbors down south in case? Because I mean, fences don't hold flooding or fires or earthquakes or anything like that.
Yeah. When we go through this, part of that describing hazard, we use all the National Weather Service models. We have a really good overlay of where fire risk is. Mainly it follows transportation corridors, some of the higher, the higher wooded areas, things like that. We have those models. They're not going to show you real time, but we know where the vulnerabilities are. And so when you focus your projects and you go out and look, that's where you go, hey, let's look at what the data that we pulled out, the vulnerabilities that we described, and hey, is, and we know the history here. That's where we're going to focus our efforts, and that's where we need to go. So it helps you pinpoint where to address that. For live stuff, you know, you need to look at your flood control and their monitoring and things like that. You know, you, we're downstream from, from Mexico, as we know, and that's always been an issue with the IOI. So it's maintaining those response plans too, to make sure that the communication's coming and going both sides and you know about that, and I know you can expand on that one.
So in regards to the Mexican counterparts, the Office of Emergency Management and the Protección Civil on the Mexican side, we have a communication, a live communication. If they receive certain emergency alerts on their end, they advise us, and then we advise either the fire department and/or the law enforcement agencies. So that communication is ongoing on a daily basis. Not all of the incidents that they have on their end, for example, flooding or wildfires on their end, impact us, but we make sure that we are aware of them, and then we advise either the Forest Service and/or our local fire department and our local law enforcement.
Thank you. You answered my questions.
Johnson, what is?
You talked about the, working on the IOI and the Hojocum Wash. Both Mr. Bermudas and Mr. Guerra had been in talks with, with the county as far as being able to fix those issues they talked about on Hojocum Wash. However, I think we hit a snag, right, Mr. Guerra? Somewhat. So you talk about mitigation and grants and all this, but we, as a city, we can't wait for, to get a grant. We need a, we need something immediately for our next monsoon season because our wash is going to erode, and it's going to affect roads. And so it is nice and everything for the, you know, talking, talking about fee, grants and everything, however, the city of Nogales requires something more, needs something more immediate, more of an emergency type of fix. There's a lot of, I don't like to use the word red tape, but we need to get that fixed. As far as, I don't know what, what the county would want to do with the IOI as far as the slip line has been placed, or what, what would the county be wanting to do with the IOI?
So regards to emergent, there, there are several emergency fundings under the state. This plan only focuses on the, on basically the future, right? It does not focus on things that currently has happened in the past. In regards to the IOI, what I could tell you is when, when that incident happened, it wasn't, it was not only an emergency for the city of Nogales, but it was also an emergency for the, bless you, for the, for the county. We contacted the state and the federal government, and they assisted us within 48 hours. Unfortunately, a lot of, a lot of, and, and let's go back to that grant, we, we were reimbursed maybe 85% of that grant. So it is very helpful. Unfortunately, some of the grants, this grant does, or this plan, or these grants that fall under this plan are for the future. They are not for the present. But if we know for a fact that you have that incident, and, and the Nogales Wash area in front of Hojocum, I've been in communications with Roy, with the mayor, with John Kissinger years before it actually eroded, and we were in communications in regards to that. It actually eroded west, west of it, and that's when, that's when emergency management called the railroad, and that's when the railroad came and they fixed that area. They also fixed another area in front.
They fixed their area.
Yes, that is correct.
Their, their.
Their area.
No, yeah, that, that area, yes, but they fixed it.
Our concern, and that's why we're bringing this up, is now that we will qualify for this grant and all the jurisdiction signs, then we are able to apply and start with the mitigation process as soon as possible. In regards to the emergency grants, they are, there are some, but then you would have to qualify, and you would have to have certain plans within the city of Nogales that will qualify you for those, for those grants.
And how's the Efron Canyon project coming along? I mean, I heard about the Efron Canyon project since four years ago, and I'm still waiting on that and see when it's finally going to come to fruition. I believe that project is going to fix a lot of issue, flood issues on Western Avenue, so.
I'm going to introduce our county manager, Jesus Valdez. He could give you more information about that.
Sir Mayor, members of council, yeah, right now, we're in the design phase of it. We're, we hired Kimley Horn. They're, I'm sorry, we hired Stan Tick. So Stan Tick is under contract to design it, get the necessary permits so we can start construction. The money has been deposited in the county coffers, so we do have the money for construction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. With this said, I know Ms. Courtney has to travel back. But before our, our financial report, I will move up number eight resolutions, being that we have it fresh in our minds. Number one, consideration and possible action of resolution R 2024-05-001, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nogales to approve and adopt the Santa Cruz County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan 2024. All in favor? On the post, to approve. Thank you. Now we go back to financial monthly report. A, March 2024 Financial Monthly Report. Miss Jean.
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. In front of you, you have the March 2024 Finance Report. And if we start with Table A, this is our general fund. We have brought in $23,785,328, which is 89% of our budget. And for expenditures, we've expended out $22,790,966, which is 58% of our budget. Also on Table A is our shared revenue. Our shared revenue, we have collected $8,364,658, which is 76% of our budget. If you move on to Table B, this is our sales tax. In March, we collected $1,257,201 in sales tax. That is $147,035 more than the previous March. So we are sitting $383,384 more than this point last year. Table C is our general fund expenditures. Yes.
On that, on that, those numbers you just mentioned, is that, some of those are rollovers from February, maybe? Because we had a negative number in February?
Yes. So like I mentioned before, we base it off of when it hits our bank account. So every month, your very end of the month is probably what we actually collect and get into the bank account the beginning of the next month.
All right. Thank you.
So Table C is the general fund broken out by department. And as you can see the bottom, for general fund, it shows where we've spent 49% of the entire budget. If you move on to Table D, this is our HERF and our overweight fees. For HERF, we have collected $2,987,875, which is 78%. And overweight fees, we have collected $291,075, which is 116% of the budget. For HERF, we have expended out $4,148,570, which is 97% of the budget. And for overweight fees, we have expended out $378,023, which is 43% of the budget. If you move on to Table E, this is our sewer account. We have brought in $2,711,720, which is 91%. We have brought in two million seven hundred and eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars, which is ninety one percent of our budget. And expended out one million four hundred and eighty two thousand and thirty seven dollars, which is sixty two percent. If you move on to table F, that is our water account. We have collected three million one hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred and eighty nine dollars, which is ninety percent of our budget. And we have expended out four million ninety three thousand four hundred and forty dollars, which is sixty eight percent of that budget. The final table is table G, which is sanitation. We have collected two million two hundred thirty two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which is seventy nine percent of our budget. And we have expended out two million one hundred and forty four thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars, which is fifty eight percent of the budget. Are there any questions on those?
Anybody have any questions?
Okay, um, then the final part is the business license summary report. For March, we had three thousand two hundred and eighty eight active business licenses in the city of Nogales. We had one that was canceled or suspended. We increased twenty six new licenses during March, and we have thirty six that are in the process of getting their licenses as of the end of March.
Any questions? Councilwoman Montiel.
Um, Mrs. Móndez, I have a question. I know that the budget sessions uh with the council are the sixteenth and seventeenth of this month. When do you think we will get our uh budget books? I know they're ongoing right now with the directors, but it's really nice to get them a week before, so we could plan.
Yes.
A week before the scheduled sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jean. Next, we move on to discussion items. A, discussion and direction and possible action affecting the use of the city manager's evaluation form. That was approved on March twenty third, twenty twenty three, Councilman Doyle.
The reason I place that on the agenda is just to, it's, it's a form that's already been approved, like you said, and. And it's just, I don't want it to stay forgotten or, you know, uh, we do have a new city manager. And I know that he's still kind of hasn't been on that long, really six months on. On board with uh running the city and he's doing a pretty good job. And I think that, you know, this is a very positive tool that we can use. Just to hopefully make his job easier by, again, being on the same, I guess, uh. Frame of mind uh with with our city manager and the council, letting him know our expectations and uh. And uh, at the same time, uh. Honoring him for the, for when we do the evaluation, for the great job that he's doing. I think it's, it's, it's nice for someone to know what's expected and and how he's going about it. So basically, it's a, it's a very positive tool, and that's the reason I placed it, uh, to see how the rest of the council feels about it. Uh, again, you know, uh, as far as starting an evaluation, well, that's up to the council. It's a, I think, uh, maybe six months is, is kind of, uh, not a lot of, lot, a lot, but I've, what I've seen is. I have seen quite a bit that has gone forward in a positive manner with him at the helm. So uh, I hope it continues that way, but this would help us give him direction and support him. And again, working together with our city manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phil. My comment would be, you know, uh, it's been, he was acting city manager for six months. He's been in as a full-time uh city manager since November. So, you know, in general, I think we, my comment would be, you know, make sure he qualifies for the full year. And then we, we would do an evaluation and to, you know, assess uh how everybody is working with him. How everybody feels about him in the council and uh, you know, but I think that's the right thing to do. Anybody, any other comments?
Councilman Doyle, uh, I, I really don't understand the, the activating the use of the city manager evaluation form. Is that, is that what we're voting on, on activating the form or?
I, I think uh, Vice Mayor, again, it's, it's uh what the council decides. I just thought I'd put it on uh to, to speak about it and, and see how, if, if we can be more helpful to our city manager. But, you know, it, that's just uh my personal opinion of, of putting it here, and that's why. I pu- I placed a discussion and possible action because it all depends uh. Uh, how we all, you know, decide on it. It's, but it's, it's something that eventually we'll, we'll have to do an evaluation. Uh, otherwise, we're, it's, it's kind of unfair to him and, and we're not doing justice. But uh, but for right now, like the mayor said, I, I have no problem with waiting until when we start.
The form is, the form is there, the form is there, we already authorized it, we approved it.
I placed it just so we wouldn't forget, cause on the last meeting, uh, a lot of the council members that had, needed time to review it again. Cause time had passed since it was placed. So it's good just to put it out there and, and let us all stay familiar with it. And at the same time, it helps us to look at, at some uh, some of the things. That we need to give guidance and direction with, and doesn't have to be on the, on the evaluation, but it helps us just to, to be familiar with it.
Okay, so you wanna make a motion on coming back on it, uh, you know, uh, September, that we. Each get a, a copy of the evaluation and, and bring it back or what, what you wanna suggest?
Like to get a little more input from the council, but if, if not, we, you know, you yourself, uh, said it, Mayor, if there's any. Uh, other idea, well, that's fine, we could bring it out, but I'm happy with, uh, as long as we're all on the same page.
I'm, you know, you have a comment?
Yes.
Well, okay, go ahead.
Well, when we, uh, when we approved the evaluation procedure, we went ahead and activated this, this form, didn't we?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Yes, the form is activated, it's just now a matter of when we wanna.
Do it.
Set a date to start an evaluation. Process, I guess.
So you wanna make a motion to set up a date?
Well, you, you're all entitled to make a motion of how you feel. I, I, I just put it out here uh so that uh, so see what's, what's fair. Uh, we're all working together with our city manager, and we're, we're trying to be as supportive as possible. And again, this is more like for guidance, direction, and letting him know our expectations. And uh, it helps us also uh with, with acknowledging his expectations from us. But so far, on a, on a one-on-one basis, I know we've been able to work with him very well. So it, you know, uh, what the mayor said, I think is probably pretty fair that, that we, or we could always revise it even before that. If you wanna leave it open, but I think a, a year gives us enough time to uh just uh. But in the process, I'm glad that our city, our city manager passes door open to all council members. And that, that's kind of helps us also to let him know our concerns and uh, and, you know, uh. When the time comes, we'll be able to evaluate on, on the team effort we've been uh having with our city manager. So it's, it's, it's really up, up to the council what they wanna do. But I'm, I think what, what uh the mayor said is very fair. So if you want me to, I'll make a motion, Mayor, and, and say we'll start, okay?
Wanna make a comment?
I think before we proceed with this, the form and the process is already in place, and you pointed out the timeframe. I think it'd be a disservice to use it as a review tool, uh, because it isn't evaluate, it's a. Evaluation of how he's done for a year. Uh, we have an open door, we can meet with him and review with him how we feel the job is going now. So I don't think that we need to do any action, cause this is already in, in place.
So I, I have a motion to say uh, uh, six months from now, it'll be a year, and I would say. Would be a time to discuss it again, and, and maybe at that time, if we need to, set an evaluation date, we can do it then. My motion is to.
Bring it back in November?
Bring it back in November.
Okay. Only.
Second.
All, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, we'll bring it back in November, Ms. Phil. Thank you. Next, next we move to con- item B, consideration, possible action to accept. The proposal from the Santa Cruz County Democratic Party for a rainbow crosswalk in the city of Nogales. On Morley Avenue, Councilwoman uh Montiel.
Yeah, just for clarification to the public, um, Frances Glad approached me. Um, and Mary Dar- Darling approached me about putting this on the agenda. Also, if you look at the charter, it's very clear, and it says if a citizen of the city is denied a place on the agenda. He may appear before the city council and present a written petition. Such petition must be acted on by the city council in the regular course of business. Within thirty days or be placed on the agenda at the regular council meeting. Having said that, uh, we are, uh, we, we follow the charter, as many have said here before. So they approached me a couple of times to put this on the agenda, and I did. And Mary, um, is Mary here or is it just Frances? Frances, you wanna come up again? Thank you, Frances.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Oh, alright, um, let's see, um. The Democratic Party has this thing where when, how should I say? When people's voices are not being heard, or there's not enough voices of that, of certain communities. Then it's really up to us to stand up for them in Nogales, in Nogales, Arizona, and Santa Cruz County. Since we're all like almost all related and we all know each other, um, we, we have that marginalized community. I don't have anyone here, I don't have uh anyone from that community here uh behind me, I don't. But one of that problem is fear and um, how should I say, acceptance. The thing is that aside from not having anything in Nogales that represents that community, like, we don't have like a program. We don't have anything um medically, because it is a health issue, it, it really is. A simple crosswalk is a simple crosswalk, at least that's what we, what was in our mind. When we did this last year, uh, we painted with chalk. And when we painted with chalk, we had so many people come to us and say, yay, good job, thank you, you know, thank you. And in fact, with, with, now that we came, uh, and we dec- we're not decided, because there were some who thought, you know, it would be a great idea if you made it permanent. And we thought, well, yeah, we, we can, we can do that. Um, and so even after it, you know, it happened in the, in the newspaper and all, people came up to us and said, that is a great idea. That's true, we do not have nothing for that community. I think we believe that everyone should be included, everyone, yes, thanks, yes, everyone. Um, or we should celebrate our, our emergency department, you know our values. The only thing that we are saying is that we do not have anything for this marginalized community. That's all it is, a simple sidewalk, uh, crosswalk, sorry. The crosswalk is what we were asking, yes, we were willing, we are still willing to uh, uh, pay for it, we are. Uh, we are not trying to cause division, oh my goodness, that's the last thing we want, no division in Nogales. Or Santa Cruz County, not in our community, never. So that is not what we are, we are for. It was to see simple, symbolic, something to show that we do accept, that we are um inclusive. That's what it is, that's all, but I, if you have any other questions, please.
Thank you, Ms. Montiel, or?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr. Bonilla.
I have a.
Councilman Bonilla.
I have a question, when you, when you mean that, uh, for this agenda item.
Mm-hmm.
You talk about acceptance and um, and to be inclusive.
Right.
Um, I don't understand what you're saying, because I come from an era. I used to work back in the day for a nightclub.
Mm-hmm.
Back in the eighties when I was younger.
Mm-hmm.
And that was totally a different decade. And I could honestly say that they were treated or mistreated very bad.
Okay.
There's this misconception, but times, like you said, have changed. So when you say that they're not accepted here in the city of Nogales, what do you mean?
No, I do not say that they're not accepted, they do not feel accepted.
See, and you say it's not a divisive uh issue, yet I have, we have a bunch of people here that are not for it, and it's already caused a division.
Um, I see, oh, is it okay to, is this like a debate?
No, it's not a debate, I'm, I'm asking you a question.
Alright, um, I still don't believe that it should be a division issue, it should not. They, they, even the people who spoke tonight felt that they are okay with the L G T B community.
That is, and so, yeah, I think most, all of us here at the council are, are okay with that, but, but uh, the, the issue here is. Uh, is painting that crosswalk with that rainbow color when the rainbow color has different meaning for, for the evangelicals.
Okay.
Uh, so again, why you say that they don't feel accepted? Okay, then why are they not here tonight?
Again, I'm saying that.
Fear from what?
Fear, they will not come up here and speak, they will not, not all of them, not every.
But why won't they, why won't they come here? I fear what, fear of, fear of being persecuted or what?
No, no, uh, being judged, perhaps?
No one's gonna judge them here.
No.
No one is, no one's judging them, but, but I don't understand is, uh, you wanna paint a pedestrian crosswalk. And you don't seem to take a moment and say, okay, how's the community gonna feel? You, you know how your, your community feels, but what about the rest of us?
I did, I did take that into consideration.
Because I went, I went, I went and surveyed not all the businesses, but, but most of them on Morley.
Okay.
And the, the feedback I got was, one, they, they didn't have a problem with it, but they didn't see a need for it. And then, then the other one, and the other one was, why weren't we asked? Why didn't anyone come here and ask us what we thought about it? So it's, it's not a matter of persecution, it's a matter of being sensitive to the needs of the other communities. Not, not.
Would you not agree, sir, that the L G T B community is also another community?
Of course it is, of course it is, but again.
And would you be sensitive to them?
We are being sensitive. Uh, I don't, and I don't see what, what a, a crosswalk. Uh, would, would, would make us, would that make us more inclusive? Are you saying that the city is not inclusive? We, we are inclusive, we are inclusive.
In, in reality, I would, it's not even for the city council or the city, it was for that community. And aside, the businesses, I, you know, perhaps, you're right, you're right, we did not ask the businesses. But Morley Avenue, it does not strictly belong to just the businesses, it also belongs to the people. It, it, it is mine, it is yours.
And, and, and with that said, that said, the people have spoken tonight.
Mm-hmm. Um, it, one, one.
Excuse me.
One people, I believe that we, that this can actually, and I'm glad it opened our conversation. I am happy that it opened a conversation. I am sure that just because there are a people here tonight speaking against it, doesn't mean that the majority of the people will not speak for it.
I think that's not the concern, basi- basically, I think that, you know, we as a city, you know, have to look at what, you know. It's not basically what uh, what's being mentioned as being, you know, the reason. It's not the reason. You know, it could be black, red, white, blue, red, purple, what, so, uh. But what is it, one, what is it gonna open up? Two? Two, who's gonna be the one sacrifice? If people come and it, and it creates a legal issue? You know, an accident, who's going to get sued? Democratic Party want to sign a dotted line?
Probably not, no. Probably be the city.
Well, you think I'm going to sign the dotted line?
The thing- Oh.
That's the thing I'm looking at.
Yeah.
You know, there's, yes, in the past, and I've seen pictures, you know, other big cities have, have done them. Other big cities did them in the past. But now what's going on? They're getting, there's a lot of lawsuits out there. Now, does the city want to be part of that? You know, and, and I'm open. I've got, I've got family members that are there. I've got no problem with it. You know, I don't divide, you know, color, race, you know, gender, whatever. I'm human. We're all human. We're all one. But this doesn't have, for me, what's the city's responsibility on a, on a traffic accident due to us doing these paintings on city streets? What did ADAT say on Grand Avenue? ADAT would not let us do it on Grand Avenue. Why? Because they weren't going to come after the city. They were going to come after the state. And they said definitely not. Now, why should the city fall into this responsibility of painting a sidewalk? And like I said, you know, it's not the, the topic. It could be any topic, compared to, you know, Mexican flag or whatever. But who's going to be responsible for that lawsuit? The city? Not in my, not in my term. That's what I have to say. Anybody comment? Go ahead, Mr. Councilman Grada, yes?
I, I don't think any of us up here are opposed or have to be involved in opinion either way. I think what we should do here is what is in the best interest of the city. Last meeting, I requested that we get a safety report from the chief police and opinion from legal. So if you guys could provide that information to us, we can better make an educated decision. Because I don't think it should be concerning whether who's for or who's against. It should be what's legal and what's right. And that's what we need to base our decisions on.
Councilwoman Montiel?
If you recall in the last meeting, that's, that's one of the things that came up. The city manager brought up the safety or someone, it's all on record. But the safety issue and that the white lines weren't painted, which are, they're still not painted anyways, by the way. So it's obviously not a safety issue. So, so yeah, we, in the last meeting, we, we raised that issue. So perhaps we have an attorney here, here from legal, the man.
Mr. John, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, mayor and, and council. I, I have a couple of concerns on this. The first is, is maybe a little conceptual. But when, and there are, there are US Supreme Court cases on this. When, when a city opens up its, its property, its buildings, its streets to, to messages, to expression, to one group, you, you, you create what's called a limited public forum for that. So when you open the door for one group to put a political message or a religious message or other non-commercial messages, you, you run the risk of other groups coming to you and asking you to do similar, to do similar or dissimilar political, religious type messages. And I think you, you have some potential liability if you say no to those other groups. When, when, when the government opens up its property to private speech, which this is, you can't discriminate or based on content. So I, I think examples were given of a Trump flag or a Mexican flag or back the blue flag. You know, you're, you're sort of running into that potential that other groups are now going to ask for the same right to do, to put a, a political message or religious message on city sidewalks. And you're either going to have sort of all these sidewalks that are going to have all these various messages or you're going to run into potential lawsuits. Because if you deny those, you know, you, you run the chance that it's going to be based on content of the message and not necessarily a safety issue. The, the second concern I have, which is a little bit more practical, and it does go to the, the safety issue. Your, your city engineer did a really nice job on a memo on Monday, I think, talking about the manual on uniform traffic control devices for streets and highways, which for some reason is, is MUTCD. And it says non-compliance with the MUTCD ultimately can result in the loss of federal aid funds as well as significant increase in tort liability. And tort liability is basically, you know, pedestrian car accidents. And, and he also included information that it's one thing to make the sidewalk, or I'm sorry, the crosswalk, a colored crosswalk to make it more noticeable. But that federal guideline discourages crosswalk art because it makes the white lines, which are your standard crosswalk, less visible when there's other things in there. So given that you have a, a public document, a public record document that tells you that this could increase accidents or makes the crosswalk less safe just by knowingly going into it, into doing something like that, regardless of the content here. It's just, I, I think you do run the chance of, of increased liability or increased exposure to liability. It is certainly the council's call or council's prerogative to, to approve this. But those are the, those two legal issues, I think, is what, are what you're going to run into if you do approve it.
Councilwoman Doyle?
Yes, also for, for legal. Considering what you said, you know, it's one thing to get a lawsuit. It's another thing for it to stick. But with all this information that has gone by tonight of things that can happen, different scenarios, and if we did get sued because of everything we've discussed, could another legal firm get the case of the, whoever's filing the lawsuit and have a better opportunity to win that lawsuit against the city? Because we're being negligent now if we decide, if we decide to go the other way.
Right. Well, as far as, if there is a pedestrian motor vehicle accident, you could be pretty much assured there's going to be a law firm involved in that, in that representing the person, maybe both of the people, both the driver and, and/or the pedestrian involved in the accident. If the city is deemed to be negligent because it allowed, allowed a crosswalk to win that, that was less safe according to the, the federal standards than a straightforward two-white-line crosswalk, which is the standard. So, right, so if you know, so that's the problem is if you, if you know that it creates a higher risk, then it increases the likelihood that you're going to be found negligent, that you weren't being reasonable when you, when you allowed this to happen. And I mean, and beyond that, safety isn't just about avoiding lawsuits. It's about people's lives and livelihood and limb, life and limb, you know. So, and, and nobody wants to increase that regardless of whether we have lawyers out there who are suing or not suing. So I, I think that's a sort of just a human concern that you want to be able to have, you know, the safest possible crosswalks you can. But, you know, I, again, I, my recommendation is, is that you, is you, you make a decision in consideration of those, those two legal issues. And I, I would discourage decisions that increase the likelihood of lawsuits.
Thank you so much for that information and experience explanation that you gave us. I appreciate it.
Councilman Grada, yes?
Mayor, I would still like to hear from our police chief. I think you did a little background on it.
I was going to call him.
Thank you.
Mr. Jimenez?
Good evening, mayor and members of the council. As you recall, in the last meeting, this topic was on the agenda. But based off that, the city manager, Mr. Bermudas, asked me to do an assessment and some research on this topic. So the first thing I did was actually wanted to see what the definition of what we were talking about. And it's, as mentioned by the city attorney, it's crosswork, crosswalk art, I should say. And crosswalk art has existed for some time now. And I'm talking, you know, back into the sixties and seventies. But it became a little bit more prolific in the early 2000s. So a lot of communities decided that, you know, that was something that was going to be a good thing for this community. But they failed to actually look into the regulations that the Federal Highway Administration had. So in 2011, there was a community that actually took the correct steps and did submit a request with the Federal Highway Safety Administration to see if they could have crosswalk art done in their community. And that's when the administration said that, you know, that crosswalk is not allowed to be deterred in any which way or form from what is already white lines, which could be two solid white lines going from sidewalk to sidewalk or some staggered white lines going all the way across. So I did a little bit more digging to see if there was anything that could be modified in that aspect. And the only thing that was allowed is if you guys have transverse to this community in Tucson and other communities in Arizona, there is a green line that's actually runs adjacent or embedded in the crosswalk. And the purpose behind, behind that approach is actually for bike paths that allows the motorists to understand that not only is this a crosswalk for pedestrians, but also for bikes. And in further research, I could not find anything else that would allow us from moving other than just the solid white lines or the staggered lines. There is some concepts in Europe that have been proven to be effective, but that involves a little bit more detail and it involves using crosswalks with the 3D effect. But I mean, that's a whole topic differently. So that's what I came up and, you know, about my assessment and my professional opinion about what this, these crosswalks can do and cannot do.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, now, Ms. Montiel?
So once again, the reason that I put this on the agenda and I stand firm because any person out in the community that pays their taxes like you and are part of this community have a right to ask any council member to put something on the agenda. And Francis, I did so, okay? And I would do it with anybody else that asks me a request to put something on the agenda. You know, I, I'm glad to hear from the attorney. I like attorneys. I can't go wrong with listening to their advice. Sometimes I don't listen to them at home. But so your legal opinion, and you know this was coming, right? Your legal opinion is that you don't favor a rainbow crosswalk? And I'll just ask you like in simple, I know your attorneys like to complicate things and I don't blame you. You have that legal mind. But I would like for your legal opinion and that way Francis and the Democrats and all those people out there also listen to both sides of it. Thank you.
Okay, mayor and council, it, it has nothing to do with the rainbow itself. There, there are, the two legal concerns I have is, is once you open the door for any political or religious or non-commercial message on your city property, you open the door for everybody, any other organization to make that same request. And if you deny that based on content, you, you run afoul of constitutional First Amendment rights. And we certainly don't want to do that. And the second issue is, as the police chief said, that sidewalk or crosswalk art, in fact, it's, it's a good quote in, in what the city engineer provided. Says sidewalk art degrades the distinct, the contrast between the white transverse lines, which is the crosswalk, against the, against the black pavement. And then it said that it does increase likelihood, any kind of crosswalk art increases the likelihood of, of accidents because it, it creates a, it can create a false sense of security for both motorists and pedestrians. So given that you have an engineering opinion that says that, that crosswalk art can increase motor vehicle pedestrian accidents, I, I think, I, I, I would advise against any crosswalk art. Not, not, the, the content of this is not a part of my analysis. It's, it's the, the constitutional issue, the First Amendment issue is, obviously is very important that if, if this city encourages or allows one form or one message, private message, can't deny other private messages based on content. And that's, that's a big concern. And the other is obviously the, the, the safety, the traffic safety.
And mayor, just to follow up, just to be clear legally, because we do have lawsuits all the time going at the city of Nogales, you know. So it's, 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 you know, you can get in line. People can sue you nowadays for anything, right? But we want to minimize that, that risk. And I understand all of that. But I just want to kind of ask a follow-up question. Can the Democrat Party or any individual who supports something like that sue the city for not respecting their, their, their rights?
No, in this particular case, the, the denial, because you don't currently have this program in place where you're allowing a private political or religious or non-commercial message on city property, the denial of it is, doesn't violate somewhat, nobody has the right to put private speech on government property. So, and the best example is that actually recent Supreme Court case where the city of Boston had a flag-flying program. And it flew flags at city hall on a particular flagpole of different organizations who would apply for it, you know, and they would put up the flag for a day or two days. And then a, a conservative religious organization asked to fly the flag, their flag, and they were denied. And, and they all went all the way to the Supreme Court. And the Supreme Court said, it's not government speech. It's private speech on, on a government limited public forum. And once you open that limited public forum up, you cannot deny based on content. In this case, if you don't approve this, you're, you're not creating that public forum in the first place.
Councilwoman Doyle?
Mayor, I, I-
I think we've heard a lot of information tonight.
Brother?
And we've, you know, the most important, I guess, for the council to, to take and, and understand were the legal issues. And so instead of continuing to go back and forth, I would like to call for the question and, and vote on it.
There, there was no motion, Mr. Doyle. So will there be a motion, Ms. Montiel?
Yeah.
Will you, do you want to make a motion? Your item?
So are you taking his comment into consideration or is he off the subject, off the topic?
Yeah.
Or, okay. I never know with Mr. Doyle.
That's, never.
Go ahead, mayor.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the proposal from the Santa Cruz County Democratic Party for a rainbow crosswalk in the city of Nogales on Morley Avenue.
Do we have a second? No second?
Fails.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, for, just for the record, the motion dies for lack of a second.
Yeah.
So the council doesn't have to take any further action-
Correct.
If, if it chooses not to.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, if I just can say-
Go ahead.
As a, as a council member- As a, as a council member and a public official, I welcome the fact that we had a nice conversation and a dialogue, and we were respectful. I really appreciate that. That's what makes Nogales strong. Thank you, Francis, and like any other resident of Nogales, I'll be happy to put anything on the, on the agenda, even though if it's, you know, controversial or not, and because it is part of the charter where it clearly states that. So thank you all for being here and sharing in the conversation.
Thank you, and I agree with you. Everybody's hoping to put a subject in, in the agenda. Feel free, that's what we're here for, to be part of the city. Next, we move to orders. A, consideration and possible action of order 2024-04-013, an order of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona approving the purchase of two 2024 F-350 ambulance from Republic EBS, which is a HTAC Houston-Gaverson Area Council vendor for the total amount not to exceed 550. Second, okay, Jasper, go ahead. Well, I just want to make a comment. These were already, Mr. Bermúdez, can you give us some?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This, these two ambulances or the funding were approved in this year's budget. The way this works is that unfortunately, you cannot, in 2025, which they're slated to be delivered, it's not like if you can go to a lot and say, I need two ambulances, so they need to be ordered. And so basically, what we did at this year's budget allocations is we allocated $550,000, which is going to be, are going to be paid in thirds. So this is not something that they're gonna get, they're not gonna get the money, but they're gonna get the order to secure those ambulances that are gonna be delivered after the final third payment in October of 2025.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Bermúdez. Ms. Montiel, did you have a comment?
Yeah, basically, that's what I was going to ask, Mayor, just exactly what you asked, because I don't want to get something or purchase something that doesn't work and, or it's something that, that was not allocated. So this, like you said, it was allocated in the, in the budget, and so it's gonna go through October 2025.
Yes, this is basically promoting the purchase order.
Yeah, okay, just so that could be on record, okay?
Correct.
Good.
Thank you. So I make a motion to approve this. Do we have a, okay, I'm sorry, Burnett, do we have, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Item B, consideration and possible action of order 2024-05-015, an order of the mayor and city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona authorizing the city manager to purchase a partial in the Lancha Grande subdivision for operations of a sewer main. Any comments? Mr. Bermúdez, can you give us just a update on what this is?
So this sewer line that runs right in the middle of the property was inherited, the city inherited this when we annexed that area. Now that we're doing the, with a water replacement project, we found out that there was a sewer line running right in the middle of the property, which makes it useless to the owner. So we got it appraised, we paid $500 for the appraisal. The appraisal came in at 16,000, the owner was contacted and he accepted the 16,000. If we would move or attempt to move that, that sewer line, the topography does not lend itself to that, and it would be way more expensive to remove or move it aside or replace it than it would be to buy the property. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. Okay, what I said, all in favor? Aye, elegance, motion passes. Item C, consideration and possible action of order 2024-05-016, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Tucson Police Department for the reimbursement of salaries and employees-related expenses for two detectives assigned to a HIDTA task force in the amount of $63,049. Yes, sir, Mr. Gracias, discussion?
Yes, I just want clarification because it says two detective salaries at 63,000. I think that's like 30,000 a detective, I think that's way below. So I think, should it be double that, or are they only paying partial?
Okay, there you go. Councilman Gracias, what's happened with HIDA is that every year that passes, their percentage, at one point in time, if you remember, there were 100% FTEs and EREs. So every year that passes, it's been going down a percentage, right? So right now, that's all they're paying, and, and the city's picking up the rest, unfortunately. So that's for FTEs and, and the EREs.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because it seemed a little off.
Yes, yes. I appreciate the question.
Okay, we got motion, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. Item D, consideration and possible action of order 2024-05-017, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona authorizing the intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Forestry and Fire Management for the loan of equipment. Any comments, discussion? Okay, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. E, consideration and possible action of order 2024-05-018, an order of the council of the city of Nogales, Arizona approving the purchase of the shelter and generator located at 100 North Victoria Drive in Nogales, Arizona from American Tower Assets LLC for the amount of $1. Any discussion? Does anybody know what it is?
I walk in every, every week.
Give us a discussion, Mr. Bermúdez.
Mr. Mayor, that, there is a shelter that where our communication system is housed. With, with the, the approval of the $10 million grant, we secured that lease for 14 years. However, American Towers is on the business of maintaining structures. So they basically said, you can take, our structure, it's yours for a dollar, and you guys can use it or not use it for eternity. Just give us a dollar and it's all yours. So that's where we're at, but that's where our communication system is housed, the Mabenedict.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Gracias.
And that it's in their best interest, I mean, it looks kind of weird because it says it's only a dollar.
Yeah.
But we're, we're still going into an agreement for a lease, and legally you have to.
You can't give it away.
At $1, you can't give it away.
Correct.
I just want to make sure everybody understands that's what we're doing, it's just formalizing the process.
Yes, sir, thank you. All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Motion passes. We go down to number nine, mayors and council report on current events. Mr. Bermúdez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I went to the, to the second day of the softball league. Nine teams that are, they have their own league now. And I'm thankful for, for Parks and Rec Director that they, they were able to work out a, a great, a great program. So kudos to them. I also went out to, I went out to the range, I went out to the dog park, and I have never seen the, that area so clean. I, I talked to some of the employees that were there. I saw a woman, her name was, is, I guess, Anna Morales. And, and what caught my attention was that I have never seen an employee working heavy machinery. And she was, she was operating, she was cutting all the debris around there. So kudos to the, to the Parks and Rec Department. Also, the Water Department, Mr. Bermúdez, we've had a, an exceptional couple of weeks, right? With, with water break, water break issues. So they've been working around the clock. So, and if we, we don't say it enough also, Mayor and council, that we couldn't do anything without our employees. I think that they're the life of, of the city. I mean, we're just elected officials, but they're the ones who do all the, all the work behind the scenes. So I'd just like to take this time and, and thank all our employees, City of Nogales, for their, for their great work that they're doing.
Councilman Doyle. Councilwoman Mendez. Councilwoman.
Remember, you're all invited, it's gonna be Saturday. I don't know if this is the timing, and I'm sorry that Renee Travers is not here. I just want to thank Renee for all the things she did for Nogales. It was, I mean, it was my right hand on all the events, and I'm sorry she's leaving, that's all.
Councilman Gracias.
Just want to echo Councilwoman Monillas' sentiments about our employees. I hope they all feel that they're greatly appreciated. And I was gonna give a shout out to Renee Travers, but she's not here, but if she's probably listening, congratulations on your new opportunity, and thank you for doing such a great job with our Parks and Rec Department.
Councilwoman Mendez. Vice Mayor.
I attended the 20-year anniversary along with Councilwoman Mendez for Circles of Peace. And it was a great event, you know, I'm glad that we have those type of programs in the community that help people with different types of problems. It was very, very interesting, to say the least, that's all.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I did forget, I'm sorry, it's been a long meeting. But I wanted to thank Circles of Peace and all the staff, of course, my very good friend Mary Helen Meili, who started the program way, way, way back. And she's done a great job, she's still very involved. So kudos to Mary Helen and Suniga and Blanquita, all those Circles of Peace for great work they do.
Thank you. Well, I had a pretty busy month. I attended the Fresh Produce Spring Policy Summit in Tubac. I went, I was in Nogales Sonora, I was con Victoria Reunión Ordinaria del Consejo Empresarial, which is the business leaders of Nogales Sonora. I had a dinner with candidate, U.S. Senator, Mr. Mark Lamb, which was very interesting. And I had, I was at the Veterans Baseball Opening Ceremony. Had a mini retreat with the Board of Directors on, on Port Authority's, which was also a great, great talks. Attended Dominguez Festival here two Saturdays ago, which was also a great event. And I want to thank, you know, Mr. Titterball for putting it up and all the ex-band members and all the schools that, that participated. It was a very nice event. Then I attended a Merry Wealthy Earth Day Celebration. That brought up a big light for me, I think, you know, being in the agricultural field, I think, Mr. Bermúdez, and, you know, Public Works and all that, I think we're, we gotta start working on, on putting more trees around the city, parks and, and different areas. I think, you know, I, I go to other cities, you know, Nogales Sonora, they have a very nice, you know, nurseries, nurseries that, you know, kind of feed you where you're gonna grow in, you know, not this year, next year, in five years, 10 years. You know, they grow their trees in, in the nurseries. You know, obviously, it's a lot simpler and, and easier to do 200 trees in, in, you know, a space of maybe, you know, 300 square feet and, and just water them right there and let them grow. Once they're a good, a good size, then you put them out in the streets and, and the parks and all that. But I think that's one thing we, we gotta talk about. Because I think, I think, you know, I think there's, there'll be people, business people that handle, you know, nursery dirt and, and all that, you know, that would really help out, contribute to the city in, in some, some type of, of a function like that. You know, I know the UVA would do, their agricultural program would do it also. So, and then I went to, with Mr. Velazquez, to Los Padres graduation down at the Oasis Theater, which was great. Then I did the DS Grand Opening. They, they opened the top office right there where the office is behind Kentucky Fried Chicken. Very nice facility, it's very, you know, and what's that to cater to our needed family members, children, everybody, to be able to talk to them and, and, and do their job. So I think that, that big open space that they got will be very helpful. You know, you had everybody county, people from the county, you know, people from the federal, everybody involved in that. And so with all that, we, we are ongoing.
We forgot to mention, wasn't today the firefighters' graduation today?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we couldn't be there, but, but they, they did graduate today, right?
That was it, true. And then we're ongoing, Mr. Bermúdez and myself have been ongoing talks with, with the Foundation for the Meadow Hills Country Club. We had a Zoom meeting with them, we're working on, we're gonna put lights on, on the Meadow Hills. We just changed the timer for the, for the ball retriever or, or for the ball machine, extend it to 7:00 PM. Obviously, it starts, starts to get darker later and later down, down the summer. So we're, we're gonna put some, also some mats, because, let me tell you, it's been a boom. That golf course has been a boom. We're also digesting and see how we could start maybe with nine holes. So that's in the plan and, and including it with the foundation. So I want to thank Daniel Arana for all his hard work with the, with the foundation. That's all I got, Mr. Bermúdez, you got something?
Mr. Mayor, just a reminder for Mayor and council about the Officer Memorial, Wednesday, the 8th, at 10 o'clock in the morning in front of the Jesus Cordova Park.
Before anything, Mr. Bermúdez, and I will not be present. And nobody really hadn't told that, but I'm going to have a procedure on that day, so I won't be here, all right? Yes, ma'am?
I wish you the best of luck and take care of yourselves.
Thank you, thank you. With anything else? Future agenda items? Go ahead, Mr. Gracias.
I have a couple. First of all, I would like an update from our new city attorney to inform us of if they've done a review, what's gonna happen with our staff. I, I think that our staff feels like they're not being taken into account, and they're walking on pins and needles, and I think that's unfair, either by the city or the actual city attorney to look at it and give us a report back so that we're all aware and on the same page. Second issue, I would like a report on issues at the fire department. We had a great turnout today, but I'm not aware of any issues that are going on, unless some of you have already been briefed on what's going on. If it's something that we should be made aware of, please inform us. If not, let us know so that, that we're all on the same page on this, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Gracias.
Mr. Bermúdez, the two agenda items that Ms. Schaefer asked for, I will email them to you. Also, I need the, for next month, the Proclamation of Massacreation Month, or Juneteenth Month. Also, for, need an update on our city lights from UniSource. If you can ask Mr. Gilada if he can actually come here and speak before Mayor and council. And because there, there's still a lot of, I asked for this agenda item last month, and, and, and so I, I really need, I, I know that you are working on.
last month and 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 so I really need, I I know that you are working on it comparing what has been fixed and what hasn't been fixed. But I either way, people people see a light that's out and they're gonna see 20 of them. So we we need to get that issue addressed because we're still paying for these lights, whether they're on or off. We're still paying for them. So if you can please get that, I think that's it for me.
Mr. Bonillas, on on lights, you know, I I tell citizens, you know, if it's, you know, one street or whatever, give me COCO numbers and all that so we could report him. And, you know, Roy and John have done a great job with Unisource. And they've done a great job in turning those lights on. Vice Mayor?
Mr. City Manager, we can get an update on the on the White Park Street going up from 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 Walmart up all the way up to Oasis Theater. I I thought I understood that you said it was city property. Is is?
It, the legal opinion that we got from Mr. Machado before he left was that it is it is city property as far as to we're responsible for maintenance of that street.
So can we kind of take a look in in lighting that area too? Because it's very dark, all the way from from Mastick to the to the past Home Depot?
Yes.
And the other thing, an update on 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 traffic lines, you know, like crosswalk, the regular crosswalks? There's there's a couple in in the in the community that, you know, they're faded and people are complaining that they don't know, you know, there's there's no separation from the incoming traffic and and who's turning right and who's turning left. So and and one of them was on Mastick and White Park.
Right, I had talked to, I already talked to Mr. Guerra and we're in the process, unfortunately, like Mr. Councilman Bonia says, you know, our personnel has been slammed with with, unfortunately, with water breaks and paving and everything else. We're working on that and that's that's scheduled. We'll get to it, along with the painting of the crosswalks, red zones, yellow zones, and washing of the sidewalks in the downtown area. Your request of the sidewalk has been fixed. One of the things that we've been doing is that those crosswalks and red zones, yellow zones, if you recall, they were painted back in December for the Christmas parade. Obviously, we're using paint that's not adequate, that's fading. So talking to Mr. Guerra, we're gonna purchase a more expensive paint with it's with deroplast to at least do the higher trafficked crosswalks and areas. But we're working on that, Vice Mayor, as we speak.
Ms. Montiel?
Yeah, and I would like to get an update too on the status of the police chief position.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thank you.
And go ahead.
And actually, if I may, I'm glad to report that Chief Jimenez is gonna be graduating with his bachelor's in criminal justice June 10th. So 12th, oh, I'm sorry, a couple of days off. So so we're probably about six weeks away. So I'll bring him back up.
Okay, because I know the date was, we're talking about it, May 9th. Is that is that when the when we approved the extension? And I think it's up May 9th.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Jimenez has part, Mr. Bermanis has parts that said anything on the opening on the chair? We're looking at what they?
We're looking at the week of the 20th. So if you can give me a date, either either whatever date and time on that on that week, and I'll set it up for ribbon cutting.
Yeah, on that, you know, with Miss Travers and everything, basically, you know, I took the lead and told her, till the grass is ready. I don't, you know, it's such a beautiful job that they did on it that it'd be terrible to walk in it, you know, a week or two weeks, even a month prior and and damage the beautiful job that's out there. So that's what we're doing, buying time, making making sure the, you know, we want to open part of it and not the whole thing. And so once it's, they give us a green light, we'll let everybody know to do the ribbon cutting. Thank you, because it's a beautiful job. Anything else? I move to adjourn? All in favor?